Desire to make sure we're having, if people are, when people are arrested, bonds are set. You know, you gotta, they're, that's constitutional law, they're entitled to reasonable bail. But reasonable is behind the holder of life, so.
Who sets it? By the judge?
Municipal, yes, yes. Municipal judge can set the bail initially if it's an offense within the city.
So, is there like, when you say reasonable, is there like a low and high limit that's within that reason?
Well, and it varies by the offense, a lot of it's in the discretion of the judge, you know? Um, you've heard a lot about some of the particular bonds have been set over Meridian by their city municipal judge. Some of those are a little bit outside of what would be called reasonable.
Well, are, are they holding up?
I don't know.
It just looks like it.
Well, I, I, I don't know if they'll hold up if they win a lawsuit to file against him, so. I think our judge does a good job of setting reasonable bail. Um, but I can talk to him about increases and things that the board feels that it would help dissuade.
Yeah.
I think he would, I think he would help dissuade them.
Because what we're having is some of those they get locked up, it's like, two days later they're out on bond, because I'm like, they're, they're so low, they're out, just like this, so it's like, almost a waste of time. To even go through putting it, putting them in there, and they get a chance to walk out the next day or two, because we got our bond set so up.
And then someone wants that, they're doing the same thing.
The repeat offense.
How much, how much bond would they get set?
It, it just depends on type of offense, it varies by offense, I mean, if it's a felony, you know, it depends on the severity, and if the woman was actually injured or not, or. What happens, it's all fact specific, man.
From what I hear about yesterday's situation, I heard that the young man that was involved, yesterday wouldn't have had a bond.
That's possible based upon his prior offenses and maybe threat perceived to the community at large. That is, that is part of discretion of the judge as well.
It's part of the game.
But I'll look at our ordinance regarding the discharge of fireworks, bring something back for me.
Yes, sir. Uh, discuss repair to Wicklow Road, uh. I had a citizen give me a call, I guess about two weeks ago, after our land board was right right Friday, it was. And said, I had concerns about just a couple of potholes and spickles over there. Forgot his name, got his, got a green truck, a green Chevrolet truck.
I'm Mr. Jones.
Yeah, and I'm on their road, on their end.
On their road?
No, 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 no.
On the pavement side.
John Woods?
Yeah, 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 it's Mr. Woods, that's right. There's like two or three spots. Alright, and discuss the housing authority agreement and partnership, uh, no, we're at, it's Friday. Thursday or Friday, Thursday, had to be Thursday. And oh, you, you talking to me, and, uh, Miss Ashia talking to me, then I talked to Eric today about, uh, the concern that they have over there. And then, I, I haven't seen an agreement between the house authority and this, but, uh, from what I understand, uh, they pay us, or give us a, a good lump of money. To keep their, their areas, uh, up to par, uh, on, on certain things. And I, I don't want anything to, even beside the money, even any partnership throughout the city. I want us to be able to work with whomever it is, and get, get the, the results of working in, in, in harm. So, uh, I know you had called me, I know she had called me upset about, you know, our partnership with them, and then her. Uh, I think, what's the right word? Lacter of disagreement with, with you on what's the, the housing authorities' responsibility, and what's the city's responsibility. But even, this is my standpoint, I did, I just told, told, I told Miss Ashia that today when I talked to her, I told Eric that when I talked to him earlier. Even if it's not our responsibility, I would like for us to still try to help, and, and see what, if, if it's possible to do, anything can help me anyway.
And let me interject, because, you know, if it's private property.
Okay.
There's prohibition, it's just going on private property, and doing things that should be their responsibility. Now, if there's an agreement, I'm not aware of it, I'd like to see it, to see what those things entail, and.
That's it.
And again, and I don't know where the, there's a couple of different, there's statute, and there's also some H E opinions out there that I looked up, as I was made aware of a little bit of this, um, as a potential concern. And the gist of it is, if it's our right away, our easement, that's the problem, then we have to maintain that, and we have to maintain it. If it's on their side of it, then it's their responsibility, okay? Unless it's affecting the community at large, in which point we could declare it public health concern, and do something beyond. But, and again, I don't know all the details to know if it's at that level or not.
Okay.
You know, but that's something the board would have to decide, but I think first of all, we gotta determine, is this, is this public property, city's?
This is clearly the problem. The, the, the one on the, at East First Street, and on the corner of East First Street and Oral Street is the ditch that crosses the street, that's a city problem. The one in there, in the, on the, on Oral Street itself, the city has so much of a right of way, just like, just like on Church Street, I think our right of way, even by my houses, eight feet past the sidewalk. Now, this problem is just past the curb, not even the sidewalk, like, the curb is here, it's like, three feet past the curb. I know the city has at least three of, uh, uh, eight feet of right of way, and this issue's been going on forever, and we will not address it, we're gonna fix it. Uh, I was told that Fred said it wasn't our problem, but the city has a right of way on every street in this city. That ditch is sitting there, the, the whole thing is almost just caved in around that ditch. Their issue is, we have children live over here, it's a safety to our children, they have talked with the public work director, nothing's being done, nothing still has been done. And I know we had the storm, and that stuff happens, but we can't continue, a lot of this stuff is going on because of routine maintenance, and it started before Gary, it started before he got here. But it's his responsibility now, whether it started ten years or twenty years ago. We got ditches that's still not being down, we got covers still not being cleaned out, it's just an ongoing thing, and so, and people, people's tension has gotten up to here, because nothing's being done.
For years and years.
Yeah.
So, these are issues that need to be addressed. Interest also, he can't just go in there and go to, go to working on something, that he going in a blind, went out, but previous, uh, public work directors wouldn't want to touch it. And he got issues, but here I come now, and they didn't touch it, what, what, why didn't they not touch it?
So, that means we don't do our due diligence on our city streets and right of ways? That means we don't do anything to them, because somebody else didn't do it?
He, he got to be protected.
I, I understand.
He probably, he don't, he don't have no problem with doing it, but he wants to be, he wants to be protected, and not going private property and find himself in trouble for, with something. That the mother previous.
That side is literally four feet off the curb, and I notice the city has more than a four foot right of way.
Are they, are they talking, or, I know what, like, on, uh, so, we, we coming.
And then the ditch, the ditch.
That, that, uh, that drain that's right up to the right, in front of that one up ahead, was, they talking about that drain, or they talking about more stuff as it's.
They talking about that drain and one in the, in the middle of Oral Street.
When I, when they first called me, about a year ago or more, about that same drain there, I got Fred, went over there. Fred said, Gary, that been an ongoing issue, he said, that is a housing authority problem. Who else do I'm gonna get that information from?
Let's go find out where I'll ask for you, that's the thing.
When I left Eric, when I pulled over here, they were raising all kind of cane, called me on the phone, when I pulled up, and I saw what it was, I let my window down, and said, Fred said, that's a housing authority property. I let my window up and drove out, because I didn't want to get in no argument, out in the public, with everybody around. You know what I did, you know what I did then? I went to Brian, Brian, could you find me somebody in writing, where this showed me my responsibility to take care of that? Brian ain't looking into it. Now, if y'all want me to go, if y'all want, the board want me to go over there and do it, give me a direct order to go do it, so if anything come up about me on private property, I'm covered, all responsibility be on the board. I'm gonna do my job regardless now, but I want to make sure that I'm doing it legally.
I, I'm saying this, I'm, I'm saying.
Now, do you, do you blame me for not being, making sure I got, I'm doing the right thing before I go do it?
I, I don't blame you for that.
Okay, I'm looking out for you and the board.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
I'm looking out for you, everybody.
Yes, but, at least give them a sense that we gonna look into it and try to help them out. Even, I, I don't, I don't know how far.
I don't pull, I don't look back, if you go back to two thousand and fourteen, that same spot, same issue.
Because it's never been fixed, because the city don't want to do it, because they don't want to claim their own right of way, that's why it's still a problem, and the issue with you. You're rolling your window up driving away, we're gonna do, just like you did when I was there, when I was trying to tell you, you overtalked me, you rolled your window up and you left. Attitudes, when you in public service, you gotta be a public servant, regardless, this is a public service. Well, well, then, then we need to deal with it, we need to deal with that issue, even if we gotta go in the, uh, executive session, because this is always ongoing problem. It's always, every time somebody calls this public works director, that ain't on the city, that ain't on the city, that ain't on the city, ain't nothing ever on the city, but they take all the city tax dollars. Everywhere we go, ditches are still messed up, not even been cleaned out, covers, I guess that ain't on the city, but you taking city taxpayer dollars. This stuff has to be stopped, every time, even in your ward, what's that, what are you saying, that ain't on the city, right? Am I right? We, we been, we been over here, we telling the truth, so these are the things gotta be addressed, and yet, some people don't like to dress, they want to small talk it, and that's why we never gonna get nothing done in this city. Now, say what I had to say.
I'm gonna try to get the agreement from this, this issue.
Alright. Uh, discuss behavioral solutions, who put this on the table?
I have, they're ready.
You have, okay.
Uh, he made the recommendation that, uh, anticipated that the ready date would be July the first, if they gonna be fine, their own additional square foot.
Yeah, we waiting on the floor and come in, and that come in, hopefully this week, and we'll be through with that.
Uh, this is gonna be the room that they had, where we stored the chairs that we sitting here now, uh, they took them out, of course, put them in here, so they working on their room, uh.
Four hundred and twenty square foot.
Four hundred and twenty square foot.
July first or Friday? Hold on a second. Is it July first?
That's the same.
That's Jason, that's not me saying that.
That's, that's that issue. The rent, yeah, he wanted to increase the rent to about two hundred and fifty dollars, so it'll make it even, thousand dollars.
I make a motion to increase the rent with behavioral solution, another two hundred and fifty for even higher. All in favor, uh, alright. Uh, approve the cut, the cut check for Depot Air Conditioning Unit, uh, for Depot Fund.
Yeah, we had to buy, purchase another air conditioner for the depot, one of went out, and it's four thousand dollars, and they will, will get that.
Make a motion to do so. Say. All in favor, uh.
Dan.
Dan. Approve payment to Neil Schaefer in the amount of one thousand three hundred forty nine dollars fifty cent, M C W I Grant Projects Herman Street. Make a motion, we approve that. Say. All in favor, uh. Discuss employee, employee handbook and update policies.
Uh, I sent out the employee handbook, everybody review along with the third policies to update to be updated, uh, which is our drug and alcohol testing policy. Uh, it has some old names and old companies that's no longer in business, uh, some updated, they put the companies that we do use, and, uh, correct job titles of who are responsible for it. And then we also have the travel policy, uh, which is the only thing that does is just signify what we've already been doing, but now some, some.
I read, did, did you? Say, I haven't, I haven't finished Eric's, I'm gonna talk to him. Good job. Discuss rubbish ordinance.
Okay, so, if you're not gonna adopt a new book tonight, we need to table it, bring it back to the next board, we got a chance to pull over here. Rubbish ordinance, yeah, I emailed that, um, to everyone as well, and of course, I got some feedback from. Some Bible, some, he wants something more changes to it, um, than that, but I wanted to kind of get consensus from the board on, how, where y'all wanted to go with this particular ordinance.
Well, I found out, I found out in situations where we get some contracts involved with cutting the tree, actually, wasn't the situation where, where we had previous meeting. The contractor was only contracted to cut the tree, he said he don't cut, he don't move debris anymore, so that's, so he had, had him a uncle that he re- recommend to help, whoever he cut the tree, he didn't want to cut the tree. To come and, and they can hire him as a, like a, like sub, a second contractor, to move the tree or something, but still, that's.
That's still, that's still a homeowner's responsibility, and not the city though, that's not, that's not the color, if he had to contract just to cut it down, because that's not his job to move it, because he only contracted to cut it down. But that's still that homeowner's responsibility when it's being contracted. And then we let the city go, uh, city go do that.
The reason I want to change is in it, because if any of our residents hires somebody to cut a tree down, and he agrees, that's all he want, just get it off my house, get that tree off my house, I'm gonna clean it up. If that resident goes through a whole day of cleaning up his yard, which we want all yards cleaned up, and he piles it up out there, the city owes duty to pick up debris. And like you said, they, they pay the taxes.
Of course, we put a fee in it for it, we picked up, because there's gotta be wear and tear on the limb, so, you know, we have.
He put a fee, he put a fee in the, in the ordinance, he wrote it was a fifty dollar fee.
Which I did.
Per load, per load. Well, ninety percent of trees get blowed down by storm, which is covered by insurance, so they got insurance money to pay for it.
I would imagine that, if you hire, if a lot of my residents, my ward, uh, hire people to cut the grass, and guess what, them grass cutters pile up them limbs out there, we're not gonna pick that up?
Well, that, that's, oh, we, we just, we just make excuses.
It's the same thing, it's limbs and stuff there.
Nah, man, okay.
You've been in a storm situation, you waive your fees anyway, because it's like, it was, it was, it was a god, act of god.
And they could just take insurance money, right?
I agree a hundred.
Insurance, insurance money is beyond.
Unless it touches a property.
And it, it is an insurance money, alright?
If it touches a building, it ain't here in safety, or it's in the yard, it's not gonna be taken care of. But we got a lot of elderly residents in our whole city, and sometimes they had to call somebody to come cut a tree, now, whether or not it's a licensed contractor or not, we don't know, but we've been doing that for years. I called Joe Blow to come cut that tree, and then I, then I spend the whole day cleaning my yard up, moving it out there, and making the pipe.
You, when you.
Just like I had to, I had to tell my cu- people in my ward the same things, they called me complaining about the situation, and I told them, you know, as bad as I hate it, this is what we do. If you're contracted, that's your contractor's responsibility, I had to tell them the same thing, but then it's like, one ward gets treated one way, and other wards gets treated another way.
What defines contract?
Anybody that's getting paid, get it done, that's a contract.
Is that a contract? I thought you had to have a contract, a license, pay a fee.
Usually when they personally get a contract, they cut a tree down, it's a text home on the end, because you can't get nobody after just to cut a tree down, if you follow your house, the insurance company is not going to, uh, honor that. Because that, that person wasn't licensed and bonded, that's the reason why intelligent people get people that are contracting to move the tree, to keep them, to cut the tree following the house. I can go out there and cut a tree in my yard, and it follow my house, insurance company ain't gonna be, like.
That's true, you're gonna be liable.
It still need tweaking, he sent something out.
He said, he sent something to your email.
He sent something to your email.
He said, uh, it's not contracted, right, it's figured out for load, if, if we, if we pick it up.
If it's, if it's a contract, it's.
It's a contract.
Oh, if it is a contract.
Yeah.
So, now the city will pick up stuff from contractors?
No.
Yes.
We're not gonna pick up any contractor that lay, that cleans up the yard, and makes a pile out by the city, that's, that I agree with a hundred percent. But if I get out there and sweat for two days cleaning up my yard, because it hurts somebody, that's between me and that company, that ain't the city. I cleaned up my yard, I piled it up out there, I expect the city to pick it up.
The bigger thing is, for whoever doing that, you be in a compliance with the limb, you got a certain, and a certain will that you put to have this stuff in. And, and, and then you, that's still.
I, I'm concerned, most of all, regardless of which way the board goes with this, we've got a truck, that if we change anything, what we have in our current language, and change position. It's going to add tremendous wear and tear to that asset.
Amen.
And if we're not charging people to remove that debris. Then, we're not gonna be able to afford to keep doing that service for our citizens.
What was that last price we just had on that truck? What was the last price we had? Ninety thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Why, because it was wore out from all this overlifting?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my biggest concern, and that, that's why I put those fees in there, and that, that was me putting that in there just to put something there for y'all to discuss, chew on, and, and figure out, but. It's, I think it's, I think it needs to be part of this in some form or fashion, because, you know, if you're able to contract somebody to cut down a tree. And even if you move it to the curb, you know, you still have city services you're wanting to get, and sometimes, it's a lot. And sometimes, it's not just a few little small limbs, it's a big, it's a tree or two trees, and those things. Costs the city gas money, wear and tear on their vehicle too, to take care of.
We don't, but we don't supposed to pick up, not, but, I mean. It like, don't it, but the way you stated it, I mean, you got it, we only supposed to pick up the limb, we don't supposed to pick up the big trunk.
If they're cutting it to certain.
If they're cutting it to certain, and there's, there's a, and gee, it specifies the.
Will.
With their links of the, yeah, section there.
How much is it?
It's eight by four by four.
That's, that's been in there the whole time.
That's been there the whole time.
And we've never talked.
Nothing's also always said, if a contractor cuts a tree down, they gotta move it for.
Well, that's wrong.
Yeah, but that's, that's what our ordinance has said all this time.
Alright, so y'all can get contractors to cut the trees down, fix houses, throw all your stuff out of the road, see if they can get you.
Well, not until this ordinance is changed. Until it's changed, it says, we're not gonna do that.
This is, this is good.
This is for discussion and debate, if there's, and any input y'all can give me, I'm likely, you know, try to craft something with it.
Okay, I probably if I think that. Yeah.
We did.
Discuss their service with the telephones coming.
Uh, they came by today, uh, they're trying to bring, uh, fast paced internet, uh, down the highway, they asked if you were interested, uh, I want to bring it before y'all, for y'all to decide, so. Uh, in the event, I know we getting ready to move out, and I said, that's something that's I want to do.
Can we just come in and I'll wait this to you?
Yes, yeah, we had, when, before, we got ready to move, you know, our internet is horrible down there, phone service is horrible, so, they had come by today, discussing it with us, and then, wanted to know if we still was interested in having it. And I wanted to ask y'all, if y'all still want it down there, because if you, whatever we decide to do with the building, then it already be there, I don't know.
I think we need to do this.
Just easier for them.
Industry.
No cost, but they need permission to do it.
It enhances the opportunity.
No, he, they need a, just permission.
They wanna, it's just basically, it's not something they're gonna record, it's a right of way, threaten them, the ability to lay that fiber cable wherever they don't like. Um, but I do want to reconfirm with them, there's not a fee involved in them laying that cable for our, for that building and everything at this point. But I think you can vote on giving them the right of way.
Make a motion with that, right?
Say.
Alright, alright, discuss, discuss using a wave report for community fund day. Uh, so last year, we did, uh, University Union and Fund Day, our four kids went to school, we do the same thing, uh, this year, we're looking at, uh, this Sunday, uh, July the thirty, I think, can you go at school? The Thursday or Friday? I think Thursday or Thursday, uh, so, we're looking at July the, the thirty, to, uh, Sunday, fund day.
So. How much motion approve? How much motion approve?
Say.
July thirty, alright.
Yes, sir, July thirty.
I say.
All in favor. Approve to stop payment on the check five zero two three four to Josh and Janil Sharp, in the amount of sixty one dollars thirty cent, and reissue it. Say, all in favor, uh. Approve determination of Hunter Turner, effective June twenty of twenty twenty three. Make a motion to do so. All in favor. Approve the resignation of William Chapman, effective June twenty, twenty of twenty twenty three. Make a motion to do so.
Say.
All in favor. Approve hiring Steve Davis at the rate of twelve dollars, effective June twenty first, twenty twenty three.
Is that advertised?
Yes.
It's been on the same slide forever. Continuous thing, I make a motion, we approve the hiring of Steven Davis, twelve dollars.
Say.
All in favor. Approve emergency purchase of a motor for a water treatment plant, in the amount of nine thousand four hundred eighteen dollars sixty eight cent.
Make a motion, we do so.
Say. All in favor. Discuss four oh eight West Church Street, street.
I've heard about this street.
A minute, Jamie, by the day, looked at it, we see, if we want, we can't cut it down, because you got telephone line, power line, so, be gonna have to hire a contractor to come in there to cut it from the top down.
What are the people that do the, uh, for, for the power line?
Nope.
Can you?
They said, they got a line.
It is our right of way, that's, we're responsible to take care of it.
It's a lot of tree down through, West Church Street, down, down, so, you think about y'all, that you gonna have to be cut down.
The big old tree is hanging over, over the road, and everything.
Approve the purchase of. Oh, wait. Something like motion with hiring contractor to cut the tree on West Church Street, four oh eight, West Church Street.
Say.
All in favor. Approve the purchase of nineteen ninety seven rebuilt engine Kenworth tractor trailer truck, and it cost a thirty five thousand dollars.
So, may I, uh, discuss that we gonna have to have another, uh, code on it, but right now, our tractor truck is down. We had to hire somebody to move our equipment last week, so, we don't have, right now, we don't have tractor truck to move no equipment at all. We got the part ordered, we fixing the in-house, but we just had got the part in.
They gotta get another photo, another use, just like this one, or what's the?
It needs to be, you know, best, as close as it can be, you know? Don't necessarily have to be the same, you know, Kenworth tractor nineteen ninety seven, just, just a similar photo.
Ninety seven.
Or used, or, or used, you know, tractor trailer. Unless the board thought it was an emergency purchase, which I don't know that it's quite there at this point.
You just another boat. Recreation, approve hiring three summertime workers for a recreation department. I make a motion, is this the total program, or is this outside, what is?
See, uh.
That's the one by.
Y'all approve for me, I got, I got four.
We only have a month, and that'll work, so.
When they gonna start working?
He probably gonna start.
Man, I foregone start Monday, so y'all got Pacific Street that y'all wanting to start on, so you need to let me know now.
Okay, they gonna pick up for it too.
All they gonna do is just pick up paper, that's all they can do, so that's all, that's what we gonna have doing, so, y'all got.
I get with you with that.
I make a motion, approve the hiring of three for the recreation department.
Say.
All in favor.
All in favor? Auto control. Police department, uh, discuss replacement body count. Uh, I talked to chief Friday, Friday, until we got like seven body counts, uh. I don't know if we got, we got a quote?
Yeah. You got, you have two quotes, I believe.
And yeah, we, we need police department. We gotta have.
Looks like, you know, just looking at the quotes here, they're both for a five year, looks like a service. Motorola is a total cost of twenty nine thousand seven hundred fifty. And Axion, Axon Enterprises is thirty five thousand seven hundred eight dollars and eighty cents. Now, what I don't know about either one of these quotes is. Cause I hadn't just talked to chief about them or anything else, but I only saw this when I got here today. Does. Do either one of these provide for replacement, if the camera comes obsolete or. Is damaged, I see, I see there is a service regarding damage and a debt replacement. All year.
That's within that five years.
Within that five years.
I think five years is a, is a, a paying and then buying.
It's labeled as a subscription fee, it says grand total system price. So I'm assuming you got your hardware, six thousand nine hundred sixty six dollars. Accessories, implementation and subscription fee for the first year. On that first amount, which is a little bit higher than a year two through five. On Motorola.
Yeah, that's a, a five year payment.
Yeah.
Did the chief ever preference? Make a map?
I think the chief's recommendation was Motorola.
Yes.
Both of you got Motorola? Axon.
Orders, money gonna come out of his budget, both of you got it.
Yeah, we, we actually, we, we can't keep.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta have.
With all this, if we drink out of it, uh.
And trust me, they have really protected the police, cause we had some situations where people are said, the police does some stuff. And when they look at the camera, the camera show, show.
They got, I make motion approve the one Motorola, twenty nine five seven hundred fifty dollars, seven body counts.
That's over five year period.
That's over five year period.
Say. All, all in favor? Approve terminating the following officers from part time status, Justin Williams, Harris Griffin, Herbert Gernigans, Benjamin Langston.
I make a motion we do so.
Say. All in favor? Discuss surplus vehicles and advertisement.
I bet we gonna have to come back to that.
Alright, approve Deandre Wilson, change his status from full time officer to court time.
I make a motion we do so.
Say. All in favor?
Stan first, I second Michael. Yes.
Four, four yeses and one no.
Who know? Three yeses. Oh, Jamaica.
What's with Jamaica?
Yes.
Fire department. Headed for the airport. David too? Round two?
I have some.
Round two.
Yes, sir.
Um, I received this late this afternoon from Bank First. There is lease purchase agreement on the lease vehicles. That the board needs to approve, but we have not been given it by the bank, we should get it tomorrow. And we're gonna need to have a special call meeting to approve that. And if you want me to be here, it's gonna need to be tomorrow afternoon, I'm assuming. So, we need to figure out a good time to do that.
Okay, I, I was talking to.
Carla.
Carla, and I told her let me know as early as she can tomorrow. When she gonna have information for us, so we can go ahead and do.
This hour, two G B.
Yes, it's the lease, it's the lease purchase agreement on those.
I would think she should have it to be about four o'clock, because bank closes at fourteen.
We should, we, they should only have it at the bank.
So you want it to be about four o'clock?
At whatever time y'all say.
Let's plan on four o'clock here, city hall. Yeah, let's go ahead and talk, set that special call meeting, I apologize if we, you know.
I might, I might. I make motion to have a special call meeting approved like first, uh, per, lot, uh, lease purchase agreement tomorrow, which is for twenty.
Twenty first.
Twenty first.
We need to amend the agenda since we're making a decision on this one.
Sure, we say we do.
We got.
Yeah.
I made a motion that we amend the agenda to add the uh, lease purchase uh, agreement. A special call meeting tomorrow at.
Four o'clock. Say. All in favor?
I make a motion that we have a special call meeting at four o'clock tomorrow. Say.
Daniel.
All in favor?
Alright.
I will have your confirmations and everything, with your paycheck.
All in favor?
I don't have anything.
All in bridges. All in McCapey's. All in Murphy's. All the women typically drumming, do you have anything? Yes, ma'am, we, uh, I want to put on a agenda to talk about it. Uh, well, we go ahead and sort it now, I, I would like to, when those people, other people that would like to take up some uh, donations for, for Loma. So we've already got started, I know Bank First is, uh, already proved to go ahead and get started and take up, take up some things and some more people in the community also. So we, we would love to do that.
What the designated area?
I know, they got a trailer right there in front of, uh.
Taste's Choice.
Taste's Choice, there's a spot down there, right there by, uh, Dr. Harrison's office.
Oh, okay.
It's a trailer that I know that they have water on it already, looks like that.
And I know, uh, uh, Antonio Griffin took his food truck down there to cook for them, so if you'd like to donate some hot dogs or hamburgers or something. And he'll, he's actually going down there every day cooking for those people, if you'd like to donate anything to that.
Yes, sir, they, they got his son.
Yeah, loom that, messed up, it told loom up. Is there anything that, say you can do as a home, I mean, something from us or not?
Needs to be individually. I know, I know, I know some people, some more people probably say they're gonna take some clothes and stuff like that, and they're about doing fix and talks for people that have them to their houses. Talks over their house and stuff like that, so whatever anybody wants to donate, uh, just do it.
But yeah, if you don't want to take the water down there, they do have that trailer at Taste's Choice, you can pour the water and take it down there, and they'll, they'll get it to them.
I want your business for that or something.
Uh, I know, like I said, Antonio Griffin takes his food, food trailer and the other guy, and then, uh. Pastor Gavin from, uh, Saint Mary's taking his, his food truck down, he figured maybe they. Mr. Gary, you got that? Dee? Jay? Uh, I know last morning, I, 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 I talked to y'all about, uh. I talked to Esco about doing another addition, like when we're going westbound coming into the park. Doing a, like a playground and a pavilion, this is a, it's a, a schedule. Uh, planning, planning a playground over at Marie, something, could be something similar to that, that we would like to, like to do, but not just modest season and Esco, but we'd like to have everybody input. On, on this, uh, as we try to move forward. Yes, that's, that's a pavilion, that's a pavilion park. This is, this is just the overview of what was, they're playing a playground already. Yes, that's, that's exactly. I went over there, I took, I took my daughter over there, my youngest daughter over there, but my oldest daughter had basketball practice, but we're gonna, see, we went over there, and then everything looks nice. Uh, and soccer field's in the back, we're gonna extend with Esco as well, that's for another project, you know? But this is just wanna give everybody an overview of what we're looking at. Also, uh. And I talked to you guys about the community, uh, economic development team that I put, we put together, we met. Last Tuesday, we're gonna meet again this Thursday, uh. So, this, this will be part of that as well, and their, their whole focus is the community development, that's it, so.
Get the public to update on the walking track, where we at on that?
We regret the rain, we got all the, the pressure on there, hopefully when we get back from the M L, we'll start putting asphalt on, laying it down, so.
How, how long is that track, is it one mile?
Three quarters mile.
Three quarters mile, one.
But we do need trucks to help get it done.
Anybody have anything else? Save up the next regular recess meeting, July fifth, twenty twenty three, thank y'all, y'all be blessed.
Yeah, thank y'all, uh, I think, uh.